All right, and I'd like to call to order the City Council amended special meeting. Today's Tuesday, April 27th. City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Lontal.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mills.
Is that me?
That's me.
Here. Mayor Meyer.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Crouppa is absent, and all of the members are present.
Okay, um, does someone want to?
Motion to exuse.
Yes. And a second?
Second.
All right. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Mayor Protem Mills. Uh, Councilmember Lontal?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes four to zero.
Excellent. At this time, we will, um, take public comment. Um, if there's any members of the public who are here to comment about items appearing on the agenda, now would be the time.
Madam Mayor, I have no public comment cards and no one on teleconference.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, from here, we will reset to closed session, which will be, uh, in the Simpson Center, and we will come back here as close to six o'clock as we can. Thank you.
Local food truck here in town. Um, I reside on the east end of Hemet, and, uh, am currently open on New Chicago in Florida, but I'm looking to move into town. I have a couple of businesses here in town that are looking to put me in their parking lot, so we'll be open local here as soon as we get the okay. So I'm here just to remind everybody that I'm still here, I'm still in business, um, still looking to do business here in Hemet. So, um, been here, uh, for a lot of years, raised four kids here and now four grandkids here, so we are Hemet-born and bred, love this town. So if you don't, uh, if you don't know a lot about Hemet and, uh, you're interested in knowing a little bit about Hemet, I am a bit of a Hemet historian, so if you're, uh, interested in knowing some, stop by the truck and talk to me sometime. I'll, uh, fill your ear with a lot of news about our town, what it used to be and what it's going to be again, so, thank you very much. That's all I got.
Great, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Darren Hagan.
Hi, everybody. Darren Hagan, um, I represent, um, the cannabis industry. Um, I was a racecar driver for eighteen years, retired five years ago. Uh, didn't know I was gonna get into the cannabis industry, but fell into it. Um, I see a lot of, uh, your policies getting ready to come out and, and have a work study on cannabis. Um, there are some issues that, for our, our company and everybody that would want to come to the town and support the town and help the town grow and do some things, there's just some things in here that we read that we would help, uh, need to have some changes on and look at and see the benefit for the city and for everybody to come into the town, um, and that's really why we're here. Um, so I didn't really have anything else, I just wanted to say hi, and, uh, if you guys wanted to go over this stuff through this study, um, would be great.
Awesome, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, the hand-raising function online was off. I was wondering if I could have a chance to speak.
Sure. You have three minutes.
Excellent.
Can you say your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jim Fitzpatrick, and I want to speak on the cannabis ordinance as well. Um, thank you for the city for bringing this forward. Uh, one favorite line that I have is, "If you want to go fast, go alone, and if you want to go far, go together." And I think this is an opportunity for the city to work with the cannabis industry. Uh, we talk about sausage making, we also have some square pegs and round holes, and I think that we could customize what's in front of us tonight into a really cool, uh, Hemet solution that will really work for the city, for the residents, and for business. I did submit some written comments over two pages, so I won't go through that. Uh, I did have a really nice conversation with the Hemet, uh, Chamber of Commerce today that is interested in working with the industry and modernizing the chamber, recapitalizing the chamber by partnering with the cannabis industry. Uh, so I'll let my written comments stand, but the one recommendation that I have is to bridge to some sort of communication where the city can get the benefit of the cannabis industry, who has seen this in, in multiple other cities, has worked through many of the issues that you're facing tonight, and really comes to the conversation and a, and approach and an atmosphere of partnership. So thank you for having this discussion, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item nine A of work study items. City Attorney or City Manager? Oh, excellent.
So we've got, uh, HBK, HBK Committee Governor Director, that will be providing the staff report on this item. Uh, the council should know that, uh, this item has been in the works for quite a bit of time. Um, I know that we've had a couple individuals that are under appliance speed on specific items, so it's good to see this come to fruition before the council today. Also, do want to acknowledge that, uh, we married this up with the sidewalk vendor item, uh, at the recommendation, and I think it makes a lot of sense with the city attorney. So collectively, we've packaged these items up, and it has been a team effort, collaborative effort to get it here. So just want to acknowledge the good work that Stephen and the HQ did and his team to bring this before council today.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, tonight before you is a work study session for food truck, as well as the sidewalk vendor permit. Uh, so basically, it is, um, a little bit of history and facts about food trucks. Uh, food trucks started back in seventeenth century. Uh, during the 2008 recession, food truck demands increased dramatically. IBIS research firm estimated that over twenty-four thousand food trucks operate currently in the United States. Uh, this is, this estimated about one billion dollars' worth of business annually through the food truck industry. Between 2015 and 2020, estimated increase of seven point five percent. Uh, this is a standalone business and an, um, extension of brick-and-mortar restaurants as well. Uh, how do we define food trucks? Uh, this is self-contained facility with kitchen, uh, service, service of food and drinks. It's owner-operated generally. Owner with employees, short-term operators, mealtime, special events, outdoor markets, and swap meets, so are generally located at this time. Uh, other cities. Cities with food truck ordinances are in City of Fontana, City of Lake Elsinore, City of Palm Springs, and City of Valens that we polled. Uh, obviously, there are other cities that have those ordinances, but these are the cities that we polled. Some cities have limited permits such as City of Los Angeles, City of New York, and City of Chicago. Uh, the permits are, so, once we establish they'll have a food truck permit, which is a city permit required, department of motor vehicle permit for the vehicle itself, and the county requires a health permit and resellers permit. And this is an annual renewal permit. The locations for a food truck. So currently, um, we don't allow food trucks within the city limits, other than, uh, special events and so forth. So here, we have currently a public and emergency access can't be impeded, not creating a traffic hazard, not on major roadways, um, and we'll go into a little more details on that, limited time, and not in residential areas. Uh, it will be a lottery system, and clustering is, um, could be formed. And on private properties, uh, with a property owner permission, and it's limited time for special events as well. Uh, distance separation between the trucks, um, oh, sorry, distance separation. So there'll be distance separation requirement for the schools, churches, and care facilities from other restaurants and public parks as well. Uh, food truck products, sorry, food truck products, uh, so they'll be selling food, drinks, and desserts generally. Uh, the prohibited products on a food truck would be merchandise, illegal substances, and service. So service like selling insurance, um, cell phones, things of that sort. Uh, food truck signage. So the signage can be, uh, placed on the vehicle itself as a decal, or painted on the vehicle. Um, it could be a detached sign, permitted would be like menu boards or price signs. Uh, not permitted would be banners, A-frame signs, or flags, or poles around the food truck. Uh, food truck loading and unloading and servicing. So loading and unloading supplies should be done at commissaries, not on a public right-of-way, and not at a private residence. Uh, servicing should be done under the authorized location for cleaning, authorized repair shops if it needs engine work, and not on public right-of-way or not on a private residence again. Food truck overnight storage should be done at a commissary or authorized storage facilities, and it's not permitted to be parked at a residential home, commercial business parking lots, or public right-of-ways. Uh, some of the concerns that we have is, uh, for the existing businesses, uh, it will have a competing food types, uh, more overhead, uh, for the brick-and-mortar stores, and we have some concerns on refuse, trash and debris once they operate, uh, traffic, roadways, access to business, uh, customer parking, and temporary use, maybe seasonal or maybe temporary, and, and based on events and so on. Food truck possible benefits would be economic development, it's lower cost to get into a food truck business than a standard, uh, traditional brick-and-mortar stores. It encourages new entrepreneurship, and it generates jobs. Uh, food options are, uh, it could go from gourmet to simple. Uh, competition is between food truck operators, uh, brick-and-mortar restaurants, and immediate access to customers, so, uh, they, they can be located to the customers rather than customers coming to the restaurant itself. So they can seek out their customers, so it makes it a little bit easier for them to capture their audience. Um, price point, more affordable than some sit-down restaurants, um, then again, if you get into more of the gourmet food trucks, you might have a competing price point. So now we'll get into sidewalk ordinance. Some of these, uh, requirements and, um, points are pretty similar in a lot of ways. Uh, for sidewalk vendor, defined as a person who sells food or merchandise, uh, through a pushcart, stand, display, pedal-driven cart, wagon, showcase, rack, or other non-motorized conveyance, on a public sidewalk or other pedestrian path. So sidewalk vendor permit is what we currently have, uh, we're just, uh, extending or making it a little more consistent as well as, uh, the food truck industry. So currently, the city requires a sidewalk vendor permit, um, and it does allow for a, or it does require a menu that they would provide if they're providing food, and contact information on the cart itself. Uh, the county requires, again, health permit and resellers permit. And the current renewal process for sidewalk vendor is a six-month renewal, and it's non-transferable, and, uh, it requires a new permit when there's any change in the ownership, employee assigned to cart or operation of the cart itself. The sidewalk vendor operating, uh, sorry, slide thing, keep up with what I was saying, sorry about that. Uh, sidewalk vendor operating conditions, so there should be no sidewalk vendors operating between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. They're limited to four feet high, four foot long and four foot wide, uh, setup. A forty-eight inch minimum sidewalk is required in order for someone to pass by. Uh, if it's adjacent to curb sidewalk, um, you need a minimum six-foot sidewalk, uh, in order to operate there. A four-foot accessible pedestrian pathway for ingress, egress is required. Sidewalk vendor operating conditions, so, uh, this cannot be stored on a public property, so they can't leave the cart overnight on the street. Uh, cannot leave unattended, uh, cannot use propane, natural gas, batteries, explosive hazardous materials. Uh, should be no liquid discharge, so they can't dump wastewater on public street or sidewalk, um, any premises in the city. And trash container, the container has to be within the cart on a sidewalk vendor, so they can't have a separate trash can, and they have to remove all trash at the, um, end of that, uh, business. Sidewalk vendor operating conditions continues, uh, cannot use city-owned electrical outlets or power source, cannot block or impede path of a person being offered food or merchandise, physically altering or damaging sidewalk, uh, by placing anchors or tie-downs, uh, and they can't use, um, straps, chains, tie-downs, bands, or any type of rope, uh, to possibly, um, break the, or damage the sidewalk. Uh, signage for the sidewalk vendor, um, permitted sign can be attached to the cart itself, but any electrical flashing, uh, wind-powered, or animated signs, or other products are not allowed under the sidewalk vendor permit. Uh, sidewalk vendor goods, so they can sell merchandise as well as food for sidewalk vendors, but they still can't sell services. Uh, so again, insurance, um, any services that they're trying to provide, they can't do that under sidewalk vendor ordinance. Uh, they can't sell any animals or alcohol, marijuana, adult-oriented materials, tobacco products, products containing nicotine, products used to smoke or vape nicotine or marijuana are not permitted as part of the sidewalk vendor permit. Uh, sidewalk vendor locations, um, they could be self-supported, uh, meaning, uh, the, the cart itself can be standalone or stand by itself, not on unpaid surfaces, private property requires permission and must be paid, uh, residential zone or area is not permitted, any park is not permitted, roadway median strip, separation of opposing lanes, so this is area, like you have a raised median between, um, opposing lanes, so you see some vendors out there, uh, selling stuff, um, so those are not going to be permitted. Uh, within fifty feet of sporting activities, within fifty feet of playgrounds or pools or exercise areas, um, near farmer's market or swap meets, and special events permitted areas. And we continue on the locations. Uh, it's also not permitted within one block, um, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM to public and private schools, place of worship, child daycare, uh, not within two-hundred feet is police or fire stations or hospitals, not within one-hundred feet is police or fire officers, um, a lifeguard, emergency medical personnel, another vendor, intersection of crosswalks and sidewalks, public picnic areas or playgrounds, and community centers and athletic fields. It's also not, uh, permitted within twenty-five feet of fire hydrants, ETMs, transit shelters, bus stops and restrooms, public restrooms, not within fifteen feet of street corners, uh, pedestrian crosswalks, driveways, or alley approaches, and not within five feet of any improved areas with lawn flowers, so basically pulling them off from improved landscaping areas, uh, traffic signal controllers, power poles, and street light poles, et cetera. This is a language verbatim out of the ordinance, uh, so sidewalk vendors cannot locate on Florida Avenue, Highway seventy-four, San Jacinto Street, and it just identifies some of the major, uh, areas, one being that it's a Caltrans area, two, that's a high-traffic area for anyone to slow down or park to get their services, I mean, get their food or merchandise, would be too dangerous, so that's why we're limiting, um, to location. And if they fail to do that, uh, there's a sidewalk vendor revocation process, and this can be done if there's a falsification of information, uh, failure to comply with regulations, convictions of violations, transferring a sidewalk vendor permit to someone else, production or re-production, position on unauthorized duplication of sidewalk vendors, and once revoked, they're not eligible for one year from that revocation for applying for another sidewalk vendor permit. And revocation applies to each cart or truck, so if, if someone has multiple trucks or multiple carts, it would only be applied to that one particular that's in violation. And sidewalk vendor penalties, um, we have administrative fines for any violations of hundred, two hundred, and five hundred. Uh, administrative fines with no sidewalk vendor permit proof increases the, um, the penalties to two hundred fifty, five hundred, and thousand. And, um, currently, the language identifies police chief and his designee, but what we've been finding is that, uh, some of the vendors are, or want to know exactly, that code enforcement does have the authority, so we want to add that language of code division into, into the mix as police chief or, and/or his designee, as well as code division. And, um, the seizure and disposal will be done by police chief again, uh, for food and equipment only. Uh, again, merchandise is not included in there, uh, due to the state law, but food, uh, due to health and safety concerns, can be, and the equipment that makes the food can be. So staff is available to answer any questions you may have, um, as well as the city attorney, and we're happy to answer anything.
HP?
Yes.
Why the limitation on two hours for the two, uh, food trucks, but the sidewalk vendors have no limitation?
Generally, sidewalk vendors not supposed to be stationary. Sidewalk vendors are necessarily not be stationary, they're supposed to move, uh, as they go through their business.
Although those EZX don't move so easily, so they do plant themselves.
Right.
So do we need to have language in there for that?
We could, we could add some language into that, correct?
Is two hours enough time?
No.
I didn't think so. I, I, I think it's, we should give them more time to sell their product wherever they're, they park. Um, two hours is pretty, uh, small window for them to sell anything. It might take an hour for them to bring up their, their stove and get everything prepared, then they only have one hour to, to sell something.
Well, the two hours does not include setup and breakdown, so it's just two hours of sales, but the setup and breakdown is not included in that timeframe. But city attorney can weigh in on that.
Uh, to answer two questions there, uh, one from the mayor was about the EZX. Uh, if you look at eighteen to four eighty-three, the operating conditions of the sidewalk vendor, which is on page twenty-seven of the packet, subsection O, prohibits the use or placement of tables, chairs, shade structures, tents, umbrellas, and other furniture. So we are addressing that one. And then to Mayor Protem's question, uh, two hours was what I put in there, uh, in contemplation that, uh, the vehicles are taking up parking space that's supposed to be for parking, but the city council's perfectly free to change that number. Uh, you know, this is your guys' work study to, to give us direction on the changes. Uh, I'm shooting the dart ball out of these things.
Okay, and, and the reasoning behind, uh, seven to ten PM? I know, I used to fill food trucks in the morning at four in the morning, they'd have to be out by five to get to their place at six, because businesses open early, and, um, I don't know, uh, you start earlier than seven?
Uh, I, I don't, but the trucks do.
Yeah. So that'd be something we want to look at also, maybe starting a little earlier?
Sure, that, that's certainly something that the, the council can give us direction as well. I mean, I think the, you know, intent of the food trucks is to operate in commercial areas, um, and so I think there's less of a concern about interfering with residents.
I got you, okay. Thank you.
Questions, Russ?
Yeah, um, and I got a, uh, an email from Councilmember Crouppa. She had a couple of questions, so I'll start with those. Uh, she asked, uh, a question of what prevents food truck from parking outside an established brick-and-mortar business? I think you touched on that, but, uh, what is the, uh, the distance?
So, I, I believe that was a point for discussion, uh, for the council. The language of the ordinance as it's written right now does not have a distance requirement from an existing restaurant, but that was one of the concerns that HP wanted to bring to your attention. If that's something the council might just add to the ordinance, we're prepared with language to add that today.
Yeah, I think the essence of Councilmember Crouppa's question, and I would, uh, have the same concern about, uh, reasonable competition. Uh, obviously, they have less overhead, so they could sell a similar product for, uh, a lesser price, so I think, uh, I think that there needs to be some physical separation requirement. I don't have a magic number.
I, I think in terms of stating it perhaps in a way related to health and safety, um, it would be to not take up parking, available parking that is designated for that restaurant or available to that restaurant and its customers. Um, perhaps a distance restriction, uh, would be the council's, uh, pleasure. Um, what were you thinking, like a hundred feet? Maybe more?
Um, well, I, I, yeah, I think it could be components of that. One, you touched on about, uh, designated parking for that business, because that's part of what they pay for, so you wouldn't, it wouldn't be appropriate to have a competing food truck utilizing their, their parking spaces, so that could be one element, but I think you probably put in ands or ors, and I, uh, I mean, we could certainly try a hundred feet, but that's not really very far, uh, when you think about it.
The other consideration I, I just like to bring to the council's attention on this, uh, my experience, the, the majority of your restaurants are located on streets that would be prohibited from operation under the ordinance as it's written, because they're op, they're prohibited from operating on a street where the speed limit is forty miles per hour or greater, and as this council knows, the speed limits in the city are pretty high. Um, so, or they can operate on private property with the permission of the owner, um, and so I, I think as a, as a practical matter, um, you're not going to look at very instances anyway where the regulation does written, where a food truck might park right in front of an existing restaurant, uh, on the street, because most streets that restaurants are on have higher speed limits than that, um, or in a parking lot, because they need the permission of their owner. Uh, I think you could add a catch-all to this, you know, and add a distance buffer to ensure something like that, uh, wouldn't happen though.
Well, a hundred feet was, was part of Councilmember Crouppa's, uh, suggestion in, in that one question. Uh, she also asked, are food trucks not allowed on gravel roads and parking lots?
Uh, there is a prohibition on that, um, within the ordinance as it's currently written already. Um, if you look on page forty-seven of your packet, subdivision F, food truck activity must be conducted entirely on paved portions of the premises.
Okay. And then she references, uh, section eighteen dash six zero eight of the food truck ordinance, uh, part T and part U are these, uh, sections of, uh, state law.
Uh, those are restatements of existing provisions of state laws.
Okay. And, uh, and I appreciate, uh, your response. I, I had sent an email to our city attorney asking about the, uh, the terminology of food truck, and, uh, I suggested maybe mobile food vendor, but he addressed that very succinctly, that food truck is defined by the DMV. Uh, I was just concerned that there's a, uh, guarding against any potential loophole that somebody could say, "Well, I'm not a truck, I'm, I'm, I'm this or that." But, uh, you know, thank you for the reply on that. It was, it was very clear by DMV statutes what a food truck is and, and separating from a, from a sidewalk vendor, because basically, you've got a motor vehicle versus something that's human-powered, pushcart or pedal cart, so I appreciate that. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't really have any, uh, serious concerns. I think we, we need to establish something, and, and I think experience will tell us pretty quickly whether or not what we've established is, is reasonable or unreasonable. Uh, do you have one further question on that? Uh, these administrative, uh, fines, so if, if someone has issued a violation notice, would they, how would they address that? Would they come to the police station and pay that, or go to City Hall, or?
Uh, we have a collection agency that they contact, well, not a collection agency, but we have a service that they contact directly to pay for those citations.
Okay, and, and, uh, I think if, if we don't have it, I think there needs to be some, uh, discussion of a process for appeal, uh, much like, you know, when they decriminalize parking citations and made them administrative, you know, agencies had to set up an appeal process, so that, uh, there has to be a way that somebody- of a process for appeal, much like, you know, when they decriminalized parking citations and made them administrative, you know, agencies had to set up an appeal process so that there has to be a way that somebody could appeal it. So that, that's one consideration that, that I would have. Thank you.
Joe, do you want to set hours at one place?
Yes, four.
What, four hours? Is that, is that fine with all of you? Four hours at one place?
Yes.
And, and you said a hundred feet rest for?
That was, that was something that council member Coupa put in her, in her opinion.
There should be a block.
A block?
But restaurants aren't a block apart?
No, those people should be a block from the restaurants.
But you know what I'm saying?
Every block is a restaurant.
Mayor Meyer, if I can suggest something. Maybe you could put in some language that says non-competing business. So if you have a hamburger restaurant, then you can't put a hamburger truck in front of it. But if you want to sell, let's say, dessert at that location, it would be non-competing business. So that may give you some leeway on the distance separation between the restaurants and the trucks.
My goal is always to make our ordinances as easy to enforce as possible. So it be at a block, be at a hundred feet, whatever the council's pleasure, I'm just looking for a distance. I, I think.
About the non-competing clause?
Well, I, I'm, I'm always concerned about using the city's zoning power for purposes that could be construed as anti-competitive. So that, that's why, you know, having that nexus to health and safety is what I'm, I'm always hopefully looking for. You know, that, that being said, I, I think, you know, we could, we could certainly put in an exception, except with the permission of, of the, of the restaurant. So for example, perhaps there is a hamburger joint that would love a dessert food truck to operate in their parking lot. We wouldn't want our code to prohibit the consensual business relationship of those two.
But that would be based on private property?
Right, on private.
Missions.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so a block or a hundred feet? I say a hundred feet. A hundred feet is reasonable, but?
Yeah, I would say a hundred feet with the exception that city attorney suggested.
Okay, so the question here tonight is, would you, do you have enough information with these small changes to consider this draft with those amendments for the first reading? It's on our agenda that it may or may not, so if so, make a motion. If not, we'll carry on.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, accept it with the changes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote.
Motion made by mayor pro tem males, second by council member Lilenthal. Council member Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Delilah Lintall?
Yes.
Mayor pro tem males. EZX, Mayor Meyer. And I do have to read the ordinance. And that will be to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of hemming, amending chapter eighteen of the Hemet municipal code by amending article fifteen concerning the regulation of sidewalk vendors and adding article seventeen concerning the regulation of the food trucks as amended. And that passes four two zero.
Mayor, would you mind if I read those amendments?
Yes, please.
Just so we all have, have it in the minutes so we get it right. So about the change on page thirty-nine of the, of the ordinance to subdivision G, changed it from two hours to four hours, and the addition of an additional operating restriction of not operating within one hundred feet of a, of a distant restaurant unless consented to it.
Excellent. And then we want to settle an appeals process.
And then we, we, we want to explore, now, there is an appeal process in the ordinance, but I think a, that was direction for a broader appeal process for citations citywide.
Probably for citation.
And that, that is part of an existing city council item, code enforcement process that we are looking at.
All right, excellent. That's great. Okay, it is eight minutes to seven. So if you all were nine, I would like to carry on with our work study. And it's seven o'clock. I'll have to just interrupt for a moment and let everybody that's logging in know that we are going to carry on with our work study. We'll try to keep this timely, about a half an hour, and then we will get on to our regular business. Is that fine with all of you?
H.P., do you want to cue another presentation on your side?
So this item is the second part of the work study. It has to do with cannabis and setting up a regulatory framework for the city of Hemet. I'm going to start off the presentation with the slides providing the background and the foundation for how we got to where we are today. And then Stephen will take over the balance of the presentation. And we also do have some maps that are included as part of this presentation that I can go up and provide up to the audience and for the council so that you can see, one, what's provided in the ordinance and what that map would look like in terms of where those operations could occur. And then secondary, a hypothetical example that's different from the proposed ordinance so that the council can get an idea of what some of the buffers might look like if the council chose to alter some of those buffers. So the general timeline on November eighth, twenty sixteen, the state of California voters approved a recreational marijuana persons twenty-one and over can establishing sales cultivation taxes. On November sixth, twenty eighteen, the city of Hemet voters approved measure C, which continued the prohibition of marijuana operations through December twenty twenty, and enacted a tax of thirty dollars per square foot for cultivation businesses and twenty-five percent approach receipts for businesses. And again, the voters in the did approve those items. On January fourth, twenty twenty, the council held a cannabis work study and directed the city manager to retain an expert in cannabis policy to develop an ordinance and a framework to allow cannabis operations within the city of Hemet. And then just under a year ago, on May twelfth, twenty twenty, the council was provided, or provided direction to the city manager about parameters for the ordinance which are largely incorporated into the draft ordinance that is before you today. So at that May meeting, part of the conversation that the council weighed in on included conversations related to buffer zones, economic opportunities, not only on the city side, but also for cannabis operators to essentially delve into this operation within the city of Hemet. There was some concern collectively from the council regarding lessening the impacts on residential areas in the community. There was a desire from the council to lessen the storefronts within the city of Hemet. In addition to that, there was a conversation related to micro businesses, and the council's preferred method to allow micro businesses to operate within the city of Hemet. And then finally, really looking at the state standards and not necessarily providing requirements or additional items that weren't, such as provided through the state. So those really captured the bulk of the conversation from the council level, and so that really formed the direction as well as the substance of what is before you tonight. So where are we now and where do we stand? So based on previous council direction, the city did retain HDL. Part of those conversations involve city staff, they involve the city attorney, and really was as a result of the council direction provided.
Madam Mayor, if you can hear me, the video nor the phone call, there's something wrong with the sound.
Okay, John, did you make some corrections or adjustments? I just needed a minute.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
So where are we now, based on the council direction provided in twenty twenty?
I can't hear the speaker, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so based on, can you hear me now?
Yes, that's good, thank you.
Of course. Okay, so where are we now, based on the council direction provided in twenty twenty? The city did retain HDL and put them on contract to assist with the framework and the guidelines as presented tonight. Part of that discussion did involve legal, and it did involve city staff throughout that entire process. Based on the retention of HDL and the work that's been done by them, staff, and legal, that really formulated, or we took the council direction from a subsequent work study and it captured, captured that content within the draft framework. Within the draft framework that was strictly just staff-driven in terms of, before it's gotten to this point, there was much collaboration with police, fire, community development, legal, and the city manager's office to formulate the concerns, formulate some of the challenges associated with cannabis, and identifying how this operationally would happen in the city of Hemet. And then finally, all those steps have gotten us to this point where we've got a draft ordinance for the city council to review, provide commentary on, and gather ultimate direction from the council on this item. So in terms of next steps for the council, there's a few options that are included here. The city council can introduce this ordinance as a first reading tonight as presented. The council can refine, edit, make minor adjustments to language, and introduce for the first reading as well. The city council could provide alternate direction and bring, and staff to bring back a revised ordinance in May. There are other items that the council could choose to do on this item. I should add on the previous item, that if the council provides direction, including, you know, buffer zones, and asks that the count, that the staff provide updated maps on what those buffer zones might look like, that could be another alternative in terms of additional information that the council could seek from staff tonight. And I've got something on there with respect to a sequent exemption. I'm going to let Stephen talk about that so that he can jump into that in terms of there, there is some timing constraints for us in terms of having a sequent exemption, but that really lays out the foundation for how we got here, the process that we've gone through so far, and then the next step. So Stephen, you want to go ahead and take it from here?
All right, before you start, I'm going to, just anyone that's joined us now, we are in the middle of a work study, and we are going to continue this work study and start our regular meeting as soon as we are finished here, so, so that everyone is aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what we're, what we've got before you is that end product, that draft ordinance that is the result of a city council workshop, city council direction, consultants and staff working together, but with an understanding that we have two new council members at the dais who weren't here for that previous work study. I'm going to be going through some high-level stuff, talking about the kind of policy decisions that the council can make, and then talking about what staff's recommendation is, keeping in mind that staff's recommendation is based off of the previous conversations that the city council had. So I, I always try to, you know, put these together as, as questions for the council. You know, what are we talking about, where, who, when, how? And we're going to get to each of these five questions as we go through the presentation. I know they're not in the right order, but they, they, they make sense conceptually when we go through them. So the first question is what type of businesses is the city of Hemet going to allow? And, and these are the general types of businesses. We're talking about cannabis businesses. When people think of cannabis business, the first thing they think of are dispensaries or what I would call storefront retail. There's also cultivation. There's different kinds of cultivation, indoor and outdoor. There's cannabis manufacturing. This is the turning of the plant into other products, cannabis products and edibles. There's testing labs. These are needed by the state to make sure that the cannabis products that are going to consumers are safe. There are retailers, retailers like we talked about, but there's not just storefront, there's also delivery. There's distributors, who the cannabis and cannabis products between the other licensees. And then there's micro businesses. Micro businesses are kind of, I would call it like the craft brewery of cannabis businesses. They have small cultivation, maybe they have their own, their own special types that they sell, but they will also perhaps sell other types of the cannabis products at their business. So looking just briefly at indoor cultivation, indoor cultivation allows for higher control of water, light, carbon dioxide levels. It also allows for the mitigation of property effects, the primary one that we get complaints about is odor, but obviously it does come at a higher cost. Sunshining is free, lights are not. You have to build a building around it, things like that. Outdoor and mixed light, sort of like greenhouse is a cannabis farm, has less controls. You know, you get, you know, you get the light the sun gives you, you get the carbon dioxide that the air gives you, and you also have a lot less control over things like odor. So there's a trade-off there. The city council's general direction, as I understand from last time, was they were disinclined to have outdoor cultivation because of that exact issue regarding the potential for off-property effects and the inability to control those effectively. And this is a side matter, there's also some concern about cross-pollination between commercial cannabis grows and hemp grows. So there's no actual difference between a hemp plant and a cannabis plant other than their THC content. So if you have a cannabis farm and it's near a hemp farm, your cannabis could become less potent, and your hemp could become more potent, perhaps even turning itself into cannabis. So that, that is a concern. My understanding is that neighboring jurisdictions may have tempers in them. Manufacturing, so this is the creation of oil, looks like it's going into vape cartridges. This is where we're turning cannabis plants into other things, so oils, vaping products, and cannabis-infused foods known as edibles. Distribution and transportation, this is where things are moved, they're logged, they're taxed, making sure they get tested. Generally speaking, you know, it's important parks have a nice, well-regulated market that we, if you're going to have other kinds of hemp businesses, that you have something like this in the city as well, basically logistics company. Testing labs, California requires all cannabis be tested prior to delivery, looking for safety, but also looking for the potency, making sure it's as advertised. And retailers, the part that everyone's probably most familiar with, also known as dispensaries. There's two general types. Here's the storefront, the kind you walk into and purchase cannabis and cannabis products at, and then there's also delivery only. I'll say this about the delivery, your city is already served by delivery coming from other jurisdictions, but guess what, are taking the tax revenue. So, you know, you can look at, you know, storms generally generate more business, but they also have higher visibility. So this is something I, we, we put in here because this is a, a policy question for the council as well. A lot of cities put a limit on the number of a type of business, and the type of business they usually want to put a limit on is on the number of retailers. So there's a staff recommendation of five. And then lastly, we want to talk about micro businesses. I know there's some interest in that. Micro business essentially combines several different activities discussed above at a smaller scale. They have a state license for this. They may engage in cultivation on an area less than ten thousand per feet. They can act as a distributor, manufacturer, and retailer. Like I said, it's sort of a one-stop kind of operation. So. So, policy question number one, and Mayor, it would be your pleasure, we can go through what all the policy questions are, and then you guys have an idea of what we're looking at, but the first one is what type of businesses do you want? The ordinance that you have, the draft ordinance you have in front of you allows for all types, with the exception of outdoor mixed light cultivation, okay?
I have a question on your permitting process. You have three options here, but you don't have the micro business option. Why is that?
Let's let him go with the slides first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Have at me a little bit.
One more.
And then, number two, the other question here is how many of each type of business? Do you want to put limits on it? Question number two, policy question number two, where are the businesses going to be let? So now that you've decided what businesses can operate, you've got to decide where you want them to go. And this is where the maps, the city manager was talking about, come into play. There's two primary choices here, or two primary decisions you have to make. One is what zones are you going to let them operating? So, you know, generally talking about residential, commercial, industrial, but there are actually very specific zones in the zoning codes. So there's commercial one, commercial two. We'll give you the staff recommendation based on the previous council discussion later. And then the next thing is buffers. So even if they're operating in a certain zone, you may still want them to be a set distance from a sensitive use. So state law has defaults of 600 feet for certain sensitive uses, including schools, youth centers, and bakeries. And those state sensitive use buffers are incorporated into the draft ordinance in front of you. So you define the zones. So in this example, the green parcels are all in the appropriate hypothetical zone, okay? And then two, you do the buffers. So the yellows are the sensitive uses, so schools, youth centers. And then once you put the buffers around them, all those red properties that used to be green, oops, I went too far, are no longer an authorized location to operate. So that's how you end up getting locations for cannabis businesses to operate. So we'll look at what the staff recommendation is now. The staff recommendation essentially breaks cannabis businesses into two types. There's the retail and there's the non-retail. So for this portion, and this is a good question from Council Premier for town mails, we probably should add micro business to this list. Proposed zones for cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, testing labs, and we'll just say and micro businesses, would be commercial manufacturing, limited manufacturing, general manufacturing, and that could mean all the other applicable requirements of these zones. So that gives you a map of the city that looks roughly like this, okay? I know it's a very big city, and it's a very small map, but through some very hard work of some individuals here at the city, at some point, we should be able to make those so you can get in a little bit closer. So I'm going to give you, so then, looking at the sensitive uses, so 600 feet from schools, licensed state care youth centers, that's the default state law distances. And then 250 feet from residential zones and residential uses. This was a recommendation that came from the council during their workshops. They wanted to limit the effect of these businesses on people's homes. So why am I saying residential zones and residential uses? So residential zones are those areas of the city that this city has said are for residential use. So they may have houses already there, or maybe an empty field that this council, through passing a zoning ordinance, said that houses are going to go there at some point, okay? Residential uses, there are occasionally residences that are not in a residential zone. Those are called non-conforming residences, and that's what, and that happens when perhaps we annex territory from a county, and it used to be, oops, on its home, and we said this should be commercial or should be industrial, but the house is still there and they can continue living there. And so the ordinance makes an distinction between those. So just to, let's do an example here. I took a portion of the north area of the city along State Street that I drive very often. And so if you look at this, the blue areas are zoned residential and actual residential, okay? The yellow areas are non-residential. The courthouse is down there on the bottom. The middle is a youth center park, the park. And then the green would be zoned for cannabis businesses. So you'd say, oh, good, we have lots of properties here, except we're going to add the buffers. Boom. So 600 feet from the youth park, 600 feet from the regional park, that's Valleywide Regional Park at the top, okay? No parcel that that red line touches would be able to operate a cannabis business, okay? I think the council's general idea was we don't want a marijuana or a cannabis store across the street from the youth baseball field. And then we add the residential buffers, okay? So you'll notice there's some buffers coming from the right. That's because our ordinance says residential zone, doesn't say residential zone of the city of Hemet. On the right are residential zones from the city of San Jacinto. It's an empty field in an industrial area that they have zoned very high residential. So it would have an effect. Now, these two buffers operate differently under the code. It's important that we understand it. The first one, any parcel that touches that red line cannot operate a business, period, okay? It disqualifies the entire parcel. The second ones that I just put out, the residential ones, the parcel can operate a cannabis business, but no structure can be within that area that the red lines have done. So you see, some of these parcels are slightly impacted, right? Maybe they could put restructures on the back, maybe parking on the front or something like that, all right? So that's just a hypothetical example. You can imagine this going citywide, and like I said, the city manager and staff have put together some kind of resources to get citywide maps that show these effects, but I thought it was a good idea to give a sort of site-specific example so you can see how this works. That being said, there are still numerous parcels that could still operate a business that are far from parks, far from schools, and far from businesses in that one area. So, that's your next question. Where can they locate? So the staff recommendation for everything except for retail is the CM, M1, and M2 zones. And then you also have to look at retail, so that's the next one. So the proposed zones, based on the discussion that was had, is neighborhood commercial and general commercial, C1, C2. As you can see, these zones tend follow State Street, Florida, and Sanderson. Basically, wherever there's stores, restaurants, that's where the C1 zones are, right? But you have a problem. So if you look on the right over there, you know, you look at the C1 zone, C2 zone, along Florida, a lot of these, on the front is Florida, and on their back property line is someone's house. So when we look at the, you know, sensitive uses, again, same thing, 600, 250. When we look at an example, the colors, I wish were the same to be easy to explain, but the gray is the commercial as well as the purple. The gray and the purple are commercial. The other colors are residential. You see what happens, right? So this is, all along Florida, this happens. Essentially, when you look at the city manager's map, most of Florida becomes disqualified, because the fact of the matter is that you have people's houses against all these properties. So you have to ask yourself, where can retail locate? The staff's recommendation is as proposed, though, based on previous directions, but after getting this information, that she may give us a different direction. Question three, who receives the permits? So this is based on the idea, I want to say before I go into this, this is premised upon the idea that you are going to limit the number, okay? The only reason you need to have a lottery, the only reason you need to have a competitive process, the only reason you need to have a hybrid, is if you are going to put a cap on the number we're going to receive those licenses, okay? But we can go through what the different types are. So lotteries, essentially, anyone who meets the minimum requirements, get put into a random drawing. There's very little consideration for the qualifications, and the people who win get permits. In my experience, this system usually is put forward by voter initiatives that are backed by the industry. Usually they have a higher number, and it can lead to some interesting results. So, you know, you might have a situation where the same operator puts in several applications for different sites, and ever increase the number of potential of their applications that will receive permits. But on the flip side, it does take out potential favoritism, things like that. Competitive, so this is where businesses submit applications. They're rated by a third-party consultant and city staff based on criteria established by the city council. Every application is rated using the same criteria, and those with the highest scores get brought to the city council and said, here are the people who have the highest scores, top five, top 10, whatever, who recommend that you give a permit. And then there is the qualified lottery, and this is a staff recommendation. It combines elements of both. So first off, you do have a qualification process, uniforms, city criteria, and we say, for example, everyone who scores 90 or above gets put into a lottery, if we have too many people who meet that criteria and not enough permits. And this is kind of, I call it sort of a best of both worlds. You are doing a rigorous application process to make sure that you're getting quality applications and quality businesses coming into the city, but you are also taking out the potential for favoritism, and I would also say the potential for significant litigation. Because when you rank people one through five, when you're number six, you have a lot of incentive to try to litigate and knock one of them out, so you move up. So, who receives permits? Staff recommendations, qualified lottery, and again, just want to say, this is, it contemplates you establishing a limit. If you don't establish a limit, there's no need to go through something like this. You could still have, though, that qualification process with, you know, rigorous standards, make sure they provide all the things to the city, but there'd be no need to deal with lottery or anything after it. The fourth question is, when are the permits issued? So assuming we have to go through a competitive or qualified lottery process, which does take time, you could have the applications due in quarter three. You have to give people a chance, because we have to establish what the zoning standards are, the locational standards. They need an opportunity to find property to make an application for. They're probably going to have to hire some consultants to assist them in putting the application together. We have to put the application out, so people know what we're going to ask for. And then it needs to be reviewed and scored, like the lottery, if you have that. So you're probably looking at a current issuance at the beginning of quarter one of 2022, if you go through a process like that. And this is just a example timeline. If we pass the ordinance today, first reading today, second reading the next meeting, you would need to bring some resolutions forward, establishing those review criteria, establishing an application fee, all of those things. Your ordinance would go into effect on the 30th day, or June 10. You could, for example, give people a couple of months to get their ducks in a row, start bringing applications, give them a 30-day window, review those, do a lottery if necessary, and then look at issuing the permits. So, you know, that's another policy question, because decisions you make today will impact that timeline, and obviously, if it is your direction that things move faster or slower, you know, city manager and staff would have to take that into account. And the last one, and this one takes up the majority of the remaining of the slides here, because these are the operational requirements that are in the ordinance itself. I am going to go through these and talk generally about what's in them, but I'm not going to go through and read the slides, because I know the mayor wants to get this meeting back on schedule. So, but I am going to talk about what happens with permits after they're issued, some general city requirements, record requirements, security requirements, voter control, fees and taxes, and then a few that are specific to each type of business. So permits expire after one year, and they're annual permits. Just like every other business regulatory permit, they may be suspended or revoked for violations. These are not land use entitlements. They go with the operator, not with the land. If a state license is suspended, revoked, then ours can be suspended or revoked. It contemplates the appointment of a city council hearing officer, who will handle appeals. In my experience, having a third-party neutral, trained attorney, whose job it is to hear these appeals and write the decisions for the city, leads to these things being done much faster and fairly. They have to have business licenses, they have to have permits, they have to, their zoning has to be confirmed. The owner has to say they can be here, and they have to conform to everything else, all the other city requirements they have. Records, they have to keep financial records, they keep records of their ownership interests. We need records of who works there. They have to keep records of their inventory. So these are highly regulated businesses, so as you can imagine, they are going to be generating a substantial amount of records that need to be provided to the city upon request. There's a lot of different reasons for this. We want to make sure that the money is not being diverted to people who aren't decaplicated. We want to make sure that people who are working there are outstanding people who aren't going to divert cannabis out of the control stream. And frankly, we want to make sure they're paying taxes. Security, they need to have security of the highest level at these operations. Lards, cannabis has to be stored. They have to have surveillance camera of very high quality that are remotely accessible by the city. They have to keep them for 90 days. They have to have licensed security personnel on-site, one promise a day. Background checks on everyone who's working there, and it has a criminal background check performed by the chief of police. This is a big one. Odor control devices have to be employed at all cannabis businesses to ensure that odor is not detected outside the facility. And this is especially an issue when you're talking about retailers who are operating in, you know, strip malls, places like that. You know, the adjacent businesses, they don't want their business smelling like cannabis. So they have to make sure that they have these things locked down, and it will require significant tenant improvements to existing facilities. And so a lot of cannabis retailers who are attempting to operate in this environment will simply choose to build their own building. Obviously, not allowed to sell alcohol and tobacco at the site of a retail. They have to pay all city fees and taxes, and they also have to enter into community benefit agreement with the city. So this talks about public outreach and education, essentially looking at an agreement with the operator of a cannabis business to ensure that the negative effects of their business are being mitigated by that business. And it could entitle things like community service and other items to protect community health and welfare. Some cannabis businesses that I've entered into community benefit agreements with, benefit agreements with, have agreed to have their security control do extra security for, you know, 500 feet or 1,000 feet of their business, things like that, which can significantly assist in making the community safer. Operating hour restrictions are contained within the ordinance. No person under 21, maybe issue a permit, can't consume the cannabis on-site. So this is something that some operators in other jurisdictions have looked for, is a kind of smoke room. The ordinance, as it's currently written, prohibits that activity. No cannabis, cannabis products are graphically depicted of cannabis visible from the exterior of the property. As I said, I drive down State Street a lot, I'm familiar with cannabis dispensaries in other jurisdictions who have billboards in the city. They have pictures of marijuana or cannabis leaves on those billboards. So that type of activity would be prohibited under this ordinance. So that type of activity would be prohibited in cannabis organizations. They need to provide emergency contact information to the city in case there's an issue. You need to know who to call. They don't want to go looking around for who the owner of the business is or who can help us. Signage, so no logos. They have to have signage that says, "No consuming cannabis." No images of cannabis, no pictures of cannabis, and no billboards or bus shelter advertising in the city. So that's only to the city, though. So I wouldn't be surprised if you didn't have storefronts, if they purchase signage outside the city. You know, that's for those jurisdictions to regulate, not this one. Or perhaps, I'm sure everyone's driven down the 215 and seen that the billboard companies seem to be doing all right, cannabis businesses. Again, no under 28 individuals on the premises. There is an exception here for medical use, 18 to 20-year-olds for the physician's recommendation. General stuff for the retailers, stuff they should be doing anyway, under state requirements, though. Perify the age of the purchasers, have a good government ID, onsite security, no drive-through. And then their hours in the ordinance are limited, nine to nine. Cultivation, again, we said outdoor mixed life is prohibited under the, under the ordinance that was drafted. Plants can't be visible from public roads. They need to follow all water and electricity requirements of the state to have plants for those. And they really need to have other control. Manufacturing, the concern with manufacturing is related to the methods of extraction. So these are highly regulated at the state level, but city fire are the ones who are going to have to put out the fire if there is a fire. So they need to follow any requirement that city fire has, whatever extraction system they use. Sometimes they use volatile solvents, they use things that can combust, that cause serious damage. So, those were the, that was the run-by of the operating standards. Obviously, the ordinance is 10, has like 47 pages long, so a lot, lots to go through. Thank you.
Okay, this is how we're going to do this. I want you guys to go through and ask your questions first and then we're going to go through one through five. And we're going to take, the staff job is to make recommendations to us based on the law, based on everything. It is our job to build the package we want, so we will go through that, okay? So let's first start, whoever has questions or concerns and to whom we want to speak to.
Just one statement real quick. The A1, A2 is out of the question because of the odor.
So referring to outdoor mixed life, it's not out the door for odor because I said so. That, that is staff's recommendation based on previous discussions the councils had. If this council wanted to authorize outdoor cultivation, direct direction, and he could revise the ordinance.
And is the 600 feet set in stone?
The 600 feet is the default under state law.
Okay.
And my understanding is that the language says unless the jurisdiction has a lesser amount. So if this city wanted cannabis businesses to be closer to schools and research, I believe you could sell out of it.
That's all of my questions. Okay, I do have a comment from council member Kupa. She said that she would prefer council to provide a direction and have staff follow up with a refined information in May. And first of all, thank you, Stephen, for that walkthrough. There was a lot of, a lot of substance to go through and I think you gave us a fairly good overview. And thank you to staff for what they've done. I received an email today, and I suspect that everybody else did, from Mr. Fitzpatrick. And I think he brings up some good points. One, we've already touched on that, that what's proposed by my staff does not include microbusiness. So I think that that's one issue. But he makes a number of good recommendations in this. And I really haven't had a chance to really do an overlay of the recommendations in the email that he sent with what the staff's proposal is. Some of it, I think, can reasonably be addressed, but I'm not sure that all of it. So I, I don't know if I'm quite ready to go forward with an ordinance right now rather than see something massaged and brought back to us in, in May. But I, I do agree with one of the concepts that is in his email was that there's a recommendation that we not set a finite number of businesses and let that number be pretty much sorted out through the zoning process. And I thought with, you know, our city attorney did a good graphic illustration of how very quickly all of the requirements, when you do an overlay on zoning, it really very quickly narrows down. And, and the recommendation from Mr. Fitzpatrick is that, that that's kind of self-limiting. So without establishing a limit, you're automatically resolve the issue of potential lawsuits and the fact that you've got to do, you know, the extra process of lottery and everything. So I think that that's an intriguing concept that seems to make sense to me. So fundamentally, I still, I still have some concerns about the whole issue of cannabis, but that's just my, my personal position. I recognize that the community survey indicates that there's a majority of the community that supports some kind of legal cannabis operation. And I think that, aside from how I might feel about that personally, I think my role as a council member is not to represent my personal beliefs, even though they may impact how I vote on something. I think my responsibility as a council member is to recognize the overarching community input. So that's all I have right now.
All right. First of all, Russ, as far as feeling the way you feel about cannabis, period. I need to remind you all that the reason that we are putting regulations in place is to stop the people that are trying to make their own regulations every election cycle. If we have regulations in place, then we don't have to gamble with the public's safety. We can put our own in place so that that will stop. So that is why I feel like we need to do this sooner than later.
Right, and I, and I have my life with that. That's why I was very much involved in helping to craft the Measure Z. So I get that.
I also believe that people are buying cannabis just by a phone call, making a phone call, getting it delivered to them. And we're losing tax money when they do that. The county gets the tax money, but we receive nothing. So I would like to get this through in order so we can have some type of tax base coming in on cannabis. And right now, we have businesses leaving, we need businesses coming in. And if this is the only business we can get, then it's going to benefit the city in the long run, I believe.
All right, Russ, unlike you, I'm very opinionated on this, so I'm going to give you guys my proposal. I don't have things set in stone, so numbers, you know, types of businesses and stuff, we need to just fill in the blanks. But I believe that we need to, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to be able to go in your list, but it's okay. I'm not going to go in your numbering order, but that's okay. First of all, I want to talk about the zoning. I feel like we need to not have any in the commercial zones and we need to do it only in the CM, the M1 and the M2s. So that's the industrial areas essentially. So doing that, that alone will limit the activity that's going on. When we talk about the types, I feel that we need no retail unless it is attached to a microbusiness. We can, and this is where, if you would still think we can do the manufacturing, the distribution, the cultivation, I say indoor cultivation if we're going to do cultivation. And that retail, when it's attached, I suppose that they could have delivery also if it's attached, but it has to be attached. And the reason is, is I feel that if someone is thoroughly invested in what they're doing, it's not just opening up a little pot shop. It's not going to be just that. When we talk about buffers, I mean, I understand that our job here is to bring income to the city. But when doing that, we can't set aside the safety measures that we promised our people that live in our city. And so this may be off the charts, but I did a little radius from my house. 1,000 feet is not that far. And a residential place and a daycare is no difference if I'm raising kids. That's how I feel. If we make a $1,000, a 1,000-foot buffer, that will also limit more in that area that I suggested, leaving some space, a very limited space, for our city to operate. Then that comes down to the permits. Now, I didn't finish reading all of, researching all of Mr. Fitzpatrick's information, but in, with us trying to be consistent, we don't have a limited number of permits on any other business in our city. So if we control where it goes and it is only in a smaller area, then, you know, how many restaurants start in our town? And the hamburger place might be doing well, but maybe the sushi is not so much. And it's up to the owners to serve what people like and to do marketing. And so if we have the permit concept and the number concept, then we are checking off these boxes, but yet not, what if those, the top five don't ever end up producing? Then the people that could have won't have the opportunity. So it's just another way to look at it. It's like an opposite way to control the situation by controlling the area that it's allowed to go in. That's what I think. And let me see. As far as the permitting process, right now, we have a permitting process that goes through City Hall. And I believe in this ordinance, we say that it's going to come back and be awarded by council. And I think the process needs to stay the same as every other business. It keeps the council out of the game and we are making the determination of the policy when picking the person. You see what I'm saying? Keeps council members out of trouble. I believe up here on this map is the CM, M1 and M2 zones that are colored. Is that correct?
Yes.
So Chris, I believe, has some buffer options.
Yes.
That Steph has just put on the other press.
Yeah, so Mayor, what we have here is the proposed buffer zones as provided in the ordinance. And so what you will see is that in certain areas, that when you put the buffer in, it eliminates obviously some locations. Now, this is for the, I believe it was the non-retail side of the operation. So this is where non-retail operations would go. I should note a couple of things that would need to be refined on a subsequent map. If you look at the far northeast portion of the city, and Stephen made this note, that there is a park in a neighboring jurisdiction. And so we would need to take all of the areas that might have residential zoning or other types of zoning that would then impede on the buffer zone within the city. So we would need to nail down those specific areas. If you look a little bit on the east of that location too, it is, again, neighboring jurisdiction. And we would need to do that as well. If I can pull up the other map.
And Mayor, while I was doing it, if I might add, I wholeheartedly believe that we should respect neighboring jurisdictions and just, and for no other reason than just being a good neighbor. We wouldn't want that imposed on us. I think we need to reciprocate with that.
So this map that is, before you went up on the screen, illustrates the retail operation. Now, this is really important because we've separated them out in terms of retail and non-retail. So hypothetically, if the council wanted to look at not having retail operations, then obviously that's the council's prerogative. But what you see here is the buffers that have been included as a result of the retail operations here. In this scenario, and I think the mayor brought this up, that if you start expanding the buffer zones, if you start making them larger, I think the mayor mentioned 1,000 feet, that limits where those operations could go. So as you start expanding that buffer, you're really limiting the locations of which those operations could be there. So in this, this again is the non-retail side of it. As you notice, we've added a 600-foot buffer here for the sensitive uses. So we've made it 600 feet for all the sensitive uses and this is the map that you see. So what ends up happening is in the northeast portion of the city, you're limiting, because your buffer is now expanded, you're limiting the locations in that area, which essentially concentrates the non-retail operations near the airport area and a little bit east of there as well. So as you start expanding those buffers, you really start limiting the locations in which those operations could occur. And it's the same thing on the retail side. So again, as that buffer zone continues to grow, you start limiting even more so the operations that could occur in the city. We've included these maps just as hypothetical so that the council can see that those are the things that happen when you start messing around and playing with some of the buffers. And so that's really, we felt that it could help illustrate how those buffers could impact operations, what it might do. And then to also bring up a point that the council referenced, that it does limit the maximum, you know, just purely by the location, where it can exist, the number of operations that could exist within the city. So those are the two maps that we've provided. They are in your inbox as well. So you do have a copy of those PDFs in your inbox. And we're happy to do any other types of maps that the council would like.
Can you go back to the manufacturing, the segment of loss?
With the hypothetical?
So this map right here is 600 feet. So if you imagine, can you go up so we can see the north, the north side? I think that's the most important. Now, what we need to remember also is on Santa Fe that there are homes there as well. So essentially, you, my proposal is to do 1,000 feet. And if you look at the 600, you could almost double this to get a picture of what I'm talking about.
Mayor, just following up on that is, I have looked, because I did produce the maps for that north end, so I found that the most intriguing just for illustrative purposes. If you did go with the 1,000-foot buffers and if you took into account the neighboring jurisdictions, I do believe that there, one of those parcels might survive. But I do believe, like the city manager said, the city council would have essentially made a policy decision that the large manufacturing area that you have near the airport would be the area most appropriate for this type of business. That is an area that is, as you can see, it doesn't matter how big he makes the buffers, none of those parcels disappear.
Right, yeah. And I think just so that, our council priorities are that we maintain public safety. And so I think that that has to be first and foremost, over bringing in money. So that's why I feel that way. So that's why I feel that way. The other question I had for you was on, I want your opinion on if there should be buffers between businesses.
That's a good question. So there's two sort of schools of thought when it comes to locational restrictions for cannabis businesses, concentration or dispersion, right? The process that you're looking at right now of limiting those zones and having the buffers would encourage concentration. Like we said, basically, that large industrial area near the airport, lots of available property, lots of economic opportunity to establish a business there, but that would pretty much be the area of the city where this kind of operation could go forward. If you then added distance buffers, so you said, you all have to be in this area, but you also have to be 600 feet apart, that would dramatically limit the number that could operate to the point where you might be getting into a realm that only one or two could actually effectively operate. And it would be the kind of thing that you'd want to really map out and understand what the effect would be. Myself, litigated, so a little bit of history. Speaking of voter initiatives coming in, so the city council being able to pass regulations, previous agency that I worked in-house for had a outside group do that, an industry group, and the ordinance that they passed did exactly that. It had a bunch of zones, and it had a bunch of distances, to the point where, once you did everything, there were only like six parcels in a 62-square mile city that could actually establish the business. And low and behold, they were all owned by the same people. And so, you know, it took a while to get there, and so we litigated that and were able to get that law declared invalid for that reason. And so you've got to be careful doing that, because you might be accidentally creating monopolies for certain businesses. And like you said, I think you want to encourage competition. So you can do that, but my recommendation would be to pick one. Concentrate them in an area or disperse them and allow them to go throughout the city, but not near each other, but it's difficult to do both.
All right. We know what Linda wants to do is to wait and talk about it. Now, the, if we do a reading right now, or if we decide to introduce this as a first reading, as you all know, since we did it last meeting, we can pull a second reading and change things. So I'm confident in that, that she will still have the opportunity to do that. But you guys need to decide what you want to do.
Favor of going forward with it, you know, this with you.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Gus?
Yeah, I think, I don't have any problems, because we can, we can still fine tune it downstream. I do appreciate the input from people who have considerable background in the industry and appear to be speaking from a position of best practices. You know, I'm okay with going forward, but with some of the conditions that we, I understand that we have or proposing, which is limiting by, through the zoning process and not, not by a specific number of permitted businesses. And, and I tend to agree with the recommendation of the city attorney, that we pick one, one approach, and not, and not try to overlap the two. I'd be okay with a thousand-foot approach, but not necessarily a distance limit between competitors. I do have-
Are you making a motion right now?
I have a couple of questions before, though. The, if we restrict it to the manufacturing zones, can they still be able to do delivery service from the manufacturer?
Yes. So I was keeping track of the mayor's proposal. And so the amendment, as I understand it, is to eliminate the zoning section that relates to retail only, and then to add microbusiness to an allowed use in the CM, M1 and M2 zones, which already is set up for all the other uses. And that would allow retail as part of a microbusiness and could allow delivery. That's a long way of saying yes, councilor.
Okay.
But that does include retail?
It would include retail as part of a microbusiness. My understanding of the mayor's proposal was essentially no standalone retail.
Right. And my other question, and this is just really off the wall, but since we talked about food trucks, anywhere in this, would it be addressing edibles, dispensed or sold from food trucks? I said it's off the wall.
It said no marijuana in that policy.
Yeah, so I, you know, I was writing both of them at the same time, and that is, I believe, one of the prohibited activities.
I thought that was by regulation there. I just wanted some assurance on that. So, Malcolm, you have any questions or comments? Then I'll go, I'll go forward with a motion that we do first reading as amended and restated by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Oh.
If you ever woke up that-
Nothing to say. Can I read those amendments into the record before they vote, Mayor? So my understanding of the motion is the ordinance as amended with no standalone retail permitted, no uses within C1 or C2 zone. Retail is permitted as part of microbusinesses, which will be added to the CM, M1 and M2 zones. The buffers within that section which relate to those activities will both, and so this is the sensitive uses and residential, will both be changed to 1,000 feet. There will be no limit placed on the number of any type of business. And the permitting process will be changed so that it is issued by the city manager or his designate. Is that accurate as to the motion?
And maybe one additional criteria is that we treat any neighboring jurisdictions as far as the buffer is concerned, the same as we would if it was our jurisdiction.
So as, as written, that's already the case.
Okay.
Yeah. And so you're going to, you're going to end up with an area in the middle of the city down by the airport, so we won't have to worry about neighboring jurisdictions. But up on Santa Fe, Big Street, those jurisdictions zoning will cross into decision.
Can I make one more amendment? Since we don't have all these, this red tape and loopholes, can we get going on this?
So that would be a great question for the city manager. I can say that you, by moving forward today and by having no limits and essentially making it, you know, where there's qualifications and zoning other requirements, I do believe-
You mean like, should we make our goal like quarter three?
Yes.
Issuing permits? It's three months sooner, but it's three months less work.
You can definitely shoot for that. I know that it's going to require obviously work with community development, Stephen's office, and then any other offices too, but we can certainly set that as a goal.
All right, well, it's a little bit old, it'll be awesome. All right, you have a first and a second. Would you like to do a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Brown. Second by Mayor Preton Mills, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Lompa.
Yes.
Mayor Preton Mills.
Yes.
Mayor Meyer.
Yes.
That motion passes four to zero to introduce for first reading an ordinance of the City of Hemet, California, amending Chapter 18 of the Hemet Municipal Code by adding Article 16 concerning the regulation of cannabis businesses as amended.
I have one more thing to talk about. According to the cannabis ordinance on 9B, I would like to be able to direct our city attorney to look into the southeast corner of Florida Avenue at Columbia. They went to the Riverside County Planning Commission to put in a pot shop on that corner. And I don't believe, I mean, according to our city, we weren't noticed, and I think that we should have been to be able to rebut that, but we have, there's a number of accidents there since we share that corner. We share three of those corners of the county. And so I feel that we need to send a, some sort of a letter that says we're not in favor of that. You guys talk about that.
I would support that. I would second it.
Motion, second? Okay, I'll make the motion. You want to second it? Okay. Want to do a roll call vote?
Motion by Mayor Meyer, second by, that's Councilmember Brown.
Uh, Lompa.
Lompa, excuse me. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lompa?
Yes.
Mayor Preton Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
And that is, that motion passes four to zero to send a letter of opposition regarding the criteria of, I need your help actually in restating the motion.
We want to just say that we are not in favor of cannabis operation at that corner.
Mayor, just so you know, I think I'll likely phrase it in the manner that it's essentially inconsistent with the regulations that the city is adopting for its own territory, and Councilmember Brown said we all are good neighbors, so we should consider their zoning as a vantage.
Excellent. All right, with that, we will adjourn this work study. We will have a seven-minute recess, and we will be back here very quickly.[1354.97] No, 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 we got both, we got both. Yeah, okay. Yeah, but I feel it's got, yeah. All right, we are going to call to order our regular City Council meeting. It was supposed to start at seven, they had a little delay from our work study, but maybe a roll call please?
Councilmember Lillenthal?
Here.
Mayor for 10 minutes?
Here.
Mayor Meyer?
Here.
To reflect that all members are present with the exception of Councilmember Crouppa.
Excuse Councilmember Crouppa?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Motion carried? 4-0, great. Okay. First, we're going to have our invocation by Mayor Potem Mills and our pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Brown. Please stand.
Father God, thank you for bringing us together tonight, and please bless us with just good things tonight and wise decisions and voting, Father God. We ask you to watch over us and to keep us safe, and I'm thankful for everything you've done for us in this city and for the future, and thank you very much in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Everyone, please put your hand over your heart and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stands, liberation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, City Attorney. Would you like to report out of our closed session?
Thinking, Madam Mayor, we have no items to report out of the closed session today.
Excellent. Next is time for communications from the public, seeing that we have no one to communicate about an item on the agenda, but we do have three people here for general comments. First, we will go with Ruth S.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate you. I'm here tonight to officially introduce myself as the new Business Development Coordinator for the Hemet San Jacinto Chamber of Commerce. So, your chamber exists, your chamber wants to work with you, we want to not only do the fun events and things like that, but we really want to be a place where business comes to collaborate with the city and to make the process easier and to really be the city partner for business and development and even recruiting. When it comes to things like recon, when that comes back and things like that, think about your chamber and how we can help. We are definitely here for business and for you. So, thank you for the opportunity, and if I may, I will give Councilmember Lillenthal some of my cards to pass down.
Thank you. Next, we have Antoine Jarvis.
Well, maybe just quick, it's my first council meeting, I just want to say how excited I am to see the direction that the city is moving. I think the cannabis industry is going to provide a lot of tax revenue to, to help with the homeless population, to help with the youth programs in the community. That makes it more, more friendlier for people to come in from different cities to, to, to want to bring their families, to want to have lifestyles and, and, and create a long-lasting residency here. So, I just want to say a great job today and, and, and good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Ann Darwin.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to talk to you. I don't know where I start tonight. A few things going on, so a million-dollar budget for the city manager, and yet here we've already voted in for Measure U and still nothing. I get no emails, I get nothing, I haven't seen a thing. Who's, who's watching? Who's, who's in charge? I'd like to know. Is it still the people that were on before us, and now we have a whole new committee and nobody knows anybody? I'd like to get that wrapped up. That would be great, because we've already missed probably about two meetings as, as we move on. Also, I want to touch real quick on the food trucks. You know what? I'm so tired of eating fast food in this town. I would love to see food trucks come in. I would really like a variety. When I was, lived in Huntington Beach, we had Total Wines and another business, and they opened up their parking lot, and every Thursday night, there were food trucks there. That's not impeding on anybody else's business. There was a BJ's Restaurant right there on the corner, there was a Macaroni Grill across the street, they didn't have a problem with it. So, I don't see why this is such an issue, and with all these limitations that you're giving, there's not going to be anywhere for any of them to go. And, and I mean, I think it's, it's ridiculous. You should really, we should really pick a spot and then have them go there and be there on a day every week so we can all plan and bring our families, have dinner, and, and, you know, eat, eat out of our cars and trunk it like we used to. Also, too, one more thing about the cannabis. I think we're finally jumping on board with this. We do need those tax dollars, we do need to help our homeless, we do need another revenue of money coming in, and I really do believe that this is going to help us. It's really going to help Hemet, and it's going to, I mean, San Jacinto's already doing it, and I don't see a big, huge uproar, I don't see any protesting, I don't see, nobody even knows, and it's right on, on State Street and Seventh. I mean, I drive by it every day, and, and you don't see big, huge lines or anybody complaining. So, I really see us that we are moving forward in a positive manner, and I'd like to keep that momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you, May. Before you sit down, as far as the Measure U, so that is not a monthly meeting, and so the budget that is approved is approved by the Measure U Committee also, or is, is looked at, right? And so our budget should be coming up within the next month or two, because we approve it before the end of June, right? So, you will have a meeting before those, before that time to be able to look over. That's why there has not been a meeting, it's not a regular monthly meeting.
Okay, and I read it, I read it wrong.
That's okay, but I just want to make sure, we're not ignoring you. They gotta get those numbers together first. I don't want you to look at blank paper, okay? Okay. Item number 17, presentations. Do we have a highlight reel? Oh. Okay, hold on one moment before we start that. Do we have other? If we have e-
I have one by Susan Larkin.
Uh, Manny Garcia.
I did not see that one unless it was right prior to the meeting.
I received a confirmation from the city, from the city clerk.
Sure, would you like to come up and, and speak right here?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Just state your name and then you, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Amon Walker Garcia, everybody calls me Manny. I came out to Hemet three years ago. My mother was battling cancer, and I didn't expect it to be this long, but it's, this is how long it's been, and I've been here for, for three years now. I'm an attorney. I came here from Washington DC, and so I'm keeping an eye on all of you, in all seriousness. I, I'm an attorney, I came out here and I didn't expect to stay, but, you know, God has his way, and so I am an attorney and I work with food companies typically, and I have been doing this for about 20 years, and I, I have a farm, an organic farm over in Anza, we produce organic produce, and I am also a member of the Food and Nutrition Innovation Council at Tufts University in Boston. It's, Tufts has the nation's only independent nutrition school, and we work very specifically, and I work, I co-chair a group of community of color executives, let's say, in the food industry, looking at food deserts, what we refer to now as nutrition insecurity. We look at specifically how areas of typically black communities and brown communities do not have access to nutrient-dense food. And since I own a farm, I was roped into a project in Crenshaw where they are looking to, the city is looking to give them 11 acres in the middle of Crenshaw to develop an urban farm and a food hub in the middle of Crenshaw. And so we are in contact, I'm in contact with Dr. Ruiz and his staff, they know I'm here tonight, I'm, I'm in touch with Congresswoman Karen Bass, because her district is in Crenshaw, she's going to support us, and because I'm on the council at Tufts, we have a lot of people who are looking at these projects. There's another project that's going to go up in Watts called Mud Town Farms, they got about, I think, a $5 million bond to start that project, and the reason these projects are happening is because the coronavirus exposed the weaknesses in the food system in our nation, and they, and they particularly exposed the weaknesses in communities of color. Now, I can go into all of the statistics about this, but because communities of color suffer disproportionately from chronic illness, and that means diabetes, obesity, heart, various forms of heart conditions, chronic means in some sense, it is, these issues can be addressed through diet. That means nutrition could literally be the solution to many of these issues. So, I'm here tonight to present myself, but I'm also here to basically say I would be interested in doing something of this nature here in this area. As I made those journeys into Crenshaw so many times, I thought to myself, one of the issues they have in, in LA is land, but one of the issues it seems to me that you guys don't have is land. It seems like there is so much land out here that is not being used, it's abandoned, and I thought to myself, why aren't you doing something positive with that land? So, it's a win-win-win. In my view, it's a win-win-win. It's a, it's, it's local farms, local food, nutrient-dense foods. The objective in the Crenshaw project will be to get that food out to the local community. It's not going to be to sell that food to a wealthy Whole Foods down in La Jolla. You get my point? The food stays local, it's there and it's nutritious, and it's meant for the communities need it. So, I'm here to present myself, I'm here to ask if this is something that you guys want to continue to discuss with me. I would love to discuss it with you. I am going to continue to discuss it with Congressman Ruiz's office. I love those guys, they're hugely behind it. There was, there's an appropriations deadline coming up this week, and there's a program with the USDA that, that is focused very specifically on local food production.
That's excellent.
And, anyway, so I'll stop.
What I need you to do is make sure that our city clerk here has your contact information, and I'll call and set up an appointment with you.
Okay, fantastic.
That'll be awesome.
And I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't address you properly. Madam Mayor, Council, it's, it's an honor to, to address you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, city clerk, do we have any other e-commerce that need to be read?
I have, I have one, Madam Mayor, from, excuse me, from Susan Larkin. Her message was, reads, "The press enterprise just published an article on the most recent federal funding recently signed by the president, and notes that the city of Hemet is to receive $22.99 million in funding. I would like to see a public announcement of where this funding will be used." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 17A, we'll have the highlight reel of our recent accomplishments in here in Hemet.
So, Mayor, before I queue this up, we started this a few months ago, Mayor and Council, and so this is the monthly update for our, the month of April to go for some of the highlights that have happened the last month.
Okay, next, items B, C, and D, we have our proclamations by Councilmember Lillenthal.
Hello once again, everyone. If, if I could have Mr. Jones, Paul D. Jones, come forward?
Don't leave the stairs.
Okay. Well, be as it may, I'd like to make a proclamation honoring him. So, Paul D. Jones has served as General Manager of Eastern Municipal Water District, a retail and wholesale water, wastewater, and recycled water agency that serves nearly 1 million customers in western Riverside County. And Mr. Jones has served in his capacity since 2011, after previous tenures as a General Manager at other major Southern California water districts. During his tenure as General Manager, Mr. Jones has been widely recognized for his leadership in helping to transform EMWD into one of the nation's most respected and forward-thinking water, wastewater, and recycled water agencies. Mr. Jones was instrumental in accomplishments such as EMWD using 100% of its recycled water supply for beneficial reuse on an annual basis, the expansion of EMWD's groundwater and groundwater desalination programs, and its investments in infrastructure to provide safe and reliable services for future generations. During his career, Mr. Jones helped grow EMWD's federal and state advocacy efforts that resulted in hundreds of millions of dollars in external grant funding being provided to EMWD, significantly reducing the financial burden of infrastructure significantly reducing the financial burden of infrastructure investment from EMWD customers. Mr. Jones became a leading voice among state water leaders by helping to advocate for EMWD and statewide customers during California's historic drought, helping to create a more equitable formula that rewarded proactive water use efficiencies, efficiency measures. During his career, Mr. Jones helped grow EMWD's federal and state advocacy efforts that resulted in hundreds of millions of dollars in external grant funding being provided to EMWD, significantly reducing the financial burden of infrastructure investment from EMWD customers. Mr. Jones has been a leading proponent in the long-term vision of local agencies to transform the area near Diamond Valley Lake into an environmentally sustainable recreational area. Therefore, Carly Meyer, Mayor of Hemet, along with the Hemet City Council, does hereby proclaim that the city of Hemet would like to thank Paul Jones for his service to the community and water industry and wish him happiness in his retirement. Next, I would like the Chamber of Commerce to come and present this proclamation.
The City of Hemet, California proclamation. When Earth Day began 51 years ago, it marked the beginning of the modern environmental movement, fostering an environmental conscious that has increased with our environmental challenges. Earth Day brings together world climate leaders, grassroots activists, nonprofit innovators, thought leaders, business leaders, artists, musicians, influencers, and the leaders of tomorrow. The dedication and determination only increases. Hemet is committed to meeting the challenges and making change that responds to the core of Earth Day goals. We are committed to a leadership role in providing better climate and environmental literacy. We will implement climate restoration technologies. We are engaged in replanting and regenerative efforts. We recognize the importance of environmental equity and citizen science. We embrace community cleanup. Thank you. This past weekend, our city, our own city of Hemet, through the Legion, sponsored our spring committee, community cleanup on the streets of Hemet. One more cleanup is tentatively scheduled later this year. Our volunteers, Hemet City Council, and staff are engaged in turning Hemet into a new environmentally sensitive city. Whereas, we recognize that a healthy earth is needed to support our jobs, livelihoods, health, and survival, and happiness. And whereas, a healthy planet is a necessity and not an option. And whereas, we recognize that honoring Earth Day is a year-round effort. Now, therefore, the City Council of Hemet hereby proclaims April 22nd, 2021 as Earth Day and call upon everyone, everywhere, to redouble our efforts to sustain Hemet as an earth-friendly community that gives us pride and a better life. Presented today to you.
Hello, hello? Hello, hello, hello?
I wish you would tell me that when you're going to do this, I could have all the legionnaires here that actually work their tails off by Santa Claus. I worked them and worked them and worked them. I felt so bad I'd seen them scratching my name off my Christmas list.
Or his Christmas list.
I'm sorry, Santa.
I couldn't believe all the stuff that we collected. We had a large flatbed hooked up in the back of a pickup, a diesel truck, so we could haul it around. And we made four trips. It was just packed. And mattresses, refrigerators, water heaters, you name it, tables, exercise equipment. We had it all packed up on the back of that truck. So, and we were just one. And there were a lot, the community came together and they were bringing in their stuff. And we were just bringing in more and more stuff that we found on the side of the curbs. And we need to do this more often because it's, it made a small impact because there's just so much more that's out there coming home. I saw more stuff just sitting on the, on the curbs and stuff. And we, we just need to be more conscious of what's out there because people don't care. They just throw it out in the curb. Somebody will pick it up. Curb alert. And, and they don't want to call CRNR. They'd rather just let it sit there or they'll just drive it down the street and pull it off their truck and just leave it set on the side of. I live off of Gerard, going up towards Midway. And there's a spot there that's partly in San Jacinto. And that is constantly being filled with trash and junk. People don't want to take it down to the dump, so they just dump it. We have see click fix. And I do see a lot of those on click fix and I really appreciate that. And some of it's right there on my street I see. And it'll tell me if it's in my neighborhood that's on click fix. So, but we need to get the word out because we need to have that used more often.
We had over 170 vehicles come and dump stuff that day. And we had the Rotary Club, the Chamber out there, and a lot of other individuals that were out there helping. So, we thank them all.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Malcolm.
The, just a list of community, a lot of community came together. We had Angie's Restaurant, Ori's Restaurant, Sizzler, Winco, Polly's, Los Bakedos, Downtown Deli, KBC Global Healthcare, The Elks Lodge, Community Pantry, Home Depot, Lowe's, Rotary Club, Elf Club, Legion Post 53, Sons of American Legion Post 53, The Salvation Army, Veterans Paying Forward, Century 21, Congressman Ruiz's office, Hemet San Jacinto Chamber, Clover Lane Foundation, CRNR. And everybody came together to make this initiative happen. It was really exciting. One more I have. I'd like to have the members from the HRC come forward.
This is a City of Hemet proclamation for Sikh Heritage Month. Whereas, the diverse cultural, ethnic, racial, and religious heritage of the City of Hemet residents is a fundamental characteristic of our society and contributes greatly to life in this city. And whereas, the Sikhs have been an influential and impactful part of the City of Hemet for many years. And they have endured many hardships while contributing to the growth and success of this city. And whereas, in April, Sikhs around the world celebrate Vaasaki, the day the Kalsa was created by Guru Gobind Singh, which cemented the disciplines and the traditions of the Sikh faith. And whereas, the City of Hemet recognizes the important contributions that over 40 Sikh families in the Hemet San Jacinto Valley have made and continue to make to Hemet's social, economic, political, and cultural fabric. And whereas, Sikh Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the aspirations of all Sikhs and to develop a greater appreciation of and educate future generations about this rich, unique, and diverse heritage. And therefore, I, Carly Meyer, Mayor of Hemet, along with Hemet City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Sikh Heritage Month, presented April 27. And this is. And this is Amrik Singh, who is founder, emeritus of the Human Relations Council of the Greater Hemet, San Jacinto, and Menifee Regions. He's one of the people that started our organization in 1998.
Hello, my name is Amrik Singh. And there were four people in this valley in 1998. And there were some bad elements moved into the city and we had a lot of havoc there. So, we four people got together from different walks of life, including myself. I was from Asia, India, Punjabi. And then there was Jodez, and there was our Charles Knox, and one person is Dr. McHenry. So, we all four people got together and decided that we should start Human Relations Council. So, in 1998, I am a co-owner of this association, which is approximately 23, 24 years young now, and that is still going on. And that is for the betterment of this society, our understanding with the human relations with each other. Each cast, crowd, whatever color they have, so they will have it. So, the second thing is, I was wondering that Sikh minority, as she said, about 40 to 60 families in this incorporated as well as unincorporated areas. And they are the people, this is our birthday of the Sikhs. That is the April month. That is known as Vasaki. Vasaki is the birthday. And Sikhs are all created by our Tatharu Guru Gobind Singh. And all over Sikhs are the people who are very hard-working, community people. They work in this society and they give and always give, not take. So, those are the people we are here. So, I'm thankful, Madam Mayor, respected family member, honorable. And I thank you very much for all that. You guys have given us a proclamation and Sikh communities always be thankful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number 18. Unless there is any further discussion on this item, this is a receive and file. Does anyone want, have any questions regarding this item?
Mayor, we do have a presentation here, but it's up to the council if they'd like to receive the presentation from staff. I'll defer to Mayor and Council there.
Do you have any questions about it? Do you want to? All right, we'll just, we'll go at this time. Okay. Next, we have our consent calendar. All these items on the consent calendar are acted upon by one single action of the council. Is there anyone that would like to pull an item off of the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull on behalf of Councilmember Krupa, item 19E.
Okay.
E.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing that there are no more, can we entertain a motion?
A move, approval of the remaining consent calendar items.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Lilienthal, to approve the consent calendar with the removal of item 19E for separate discussion. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Perotan Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-0.
Great, okay. Item 19E.
Yes, thank you. Again, part of the correspondence I got from Councilmember Krupa. The specific recommendation he has, she has, is a little bit of worksmithing that would be on page nine of the resolution. And it's part seven that currently is proposed. The mayor shall introduce the invitational speaker and the person selected to recite the Fledge of Allegiance following the prayer. And she is recommending that we strike the phrase "and invite only those who wish to do so" and replace that with "and ask audience members to stand." And the rest of it would be the same. And I would, I would support that recommendation that she's making here.
Excellent, I agree.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve item 19E with that amendment to item seven of the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Lilienthal. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Perotan Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Motion to pass the resolution as amended.
Okay, moving on to 20 discussion action items. We have 20A. Mr. King?
So, HP's queuing that up. This is a cleanup item that, as you can see in the staff report, was from a few years back. And so Metropolitan has asked us to carry on this action at their request to move forward on, I believe, the potential sale of the piece of property that's being discussed here. So, HP?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, happy for you is a fire station parcel that was granted a deed to the city earlier in 2000. I'll go into a little, a bit of detail. The proposal is to accept an approval to record a grant deed to terminate and revert title to the grantor for the use of the approximately two acres of Metropolitan Water District of Southern California land for future fire stations. Sorry, my hands are really dry. Little bit of background. In May 5th, 2006, the city accepted a grant deed from Metropolitan Water District. This would allow the city to use the two acres as a future fire station. On April 25th, 2013, the city and NWD agreed to extend the time to April 30th, 2018. City did not complete and time has expired. So, the discussion is that the NWD recorded a notice of exercise of power of termination and terminated the grant deed, the use of the two acres to construct a future fire station. The termination is made amenable because the property is not conducive to constructing a fire station due to the rocky terrain as well as the in-gas and e-gas issues. The parcel is located on Dominigoni. Oh, shoot, I forgot the street name, sorry. But this is the site and it's a very rocky location. And if we were to locate a fire station there, in order for them to go eastbound, they would have to come back out and make a U-turn and to go back. So, it'd be a very difficult site to make it work for a fire station. This is the parcel of two acres that they're reverting back. And staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any questions? Mr. King? Anyone? All right, can we entertain a motion?
A little approval of the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Mayor Perotan Males. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Perotan Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes to the top of the resolution.
All right, then we have item 20B. This is, I'm selecting the voting delegate for the 2021 Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly. Um, I don't know if Councilmember Kuppa talked to you, but.
Yes, she did, and she's very much interested in being designated as our voting delegate to the CAG, and so I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do you have any further discussion? All right, can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Lilienthal. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
That motion passes 4 to 0 to approve Councilmember Kuppa as the voting delegate for the 2021 Southern California Association of Governments General Assembly.
Excellent. And then item 20C, this is the CDBG, um, this is the CDBG grant money that is coming back, and I believe it was Lyndon Russ, is that correct, that was on this committee?
Yeah.
Um, would you, I, I want, I want to make a motion that we keep it the same.
And I will, I will second that, and I confer with Councilmember Kuppa that she'd like to do that, too.
All right, so we have a motion, a second, any more discussions? All right, can we have a roll call vote?
Motion made by Mayor Meyer, second by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
All right, excellent, that passes. Um, we have 20D, the coronavirus update.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make this one brief. As you know, this is a recurring item that provides an update to the mayor and the council as well as the community about notable updates for COVID. One of the most notable updates that everybody's experienced is schools reopening. Our local Hemet Unified has begun a hybrid model that has allowed some students to return back to classrooms. Uh, one note is we are still open on a limited term basis, but we have expanded appointments for community development, individuals, applicants that would like permits to come and meet with staff members either in person or virtually outside of the normal operating hours that are open to the general public. So we believe it's a really good perk that we've been offering, and we will provide some more detail on this item in the near term. And then finally, I have been working with HP and have challenged the staff, I know it's a really busy time right now, to offer as many services as you can virtually, FaceTime inspections, virtual inspections, instead of having our staff have to travel to do physical inspection. So I think that is a good thing that's come about from COVID-19 in terms of forcing us to think about doing things differently, which I think would help us increase the number of inspections that we do, and ultimately process items faster. So Mayor, that concludes the update that I have for today.
Excellent. Does it, anyone have any comments or questions for the city manager? Okay, moving along to council reports, we have Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, I participated in a Zoom meeting with the League of Cities Public Safety Policy Committee, was held from 9:30 to 12:30. Primarily what we did is went over a number of proposed legislative bills that deal quite extensively with the topic of addressing some police reform legislation, and we went through a pretty exhausting list, and, and most of them, the committee took a position to oppose those, recommending that. There were some that there was no opinion on, and, but in the interest of time, I won't go through the, the whole laundry list, but there's, there's some very disconcerting bills that are being proposed, and, and I was pleased to see that the, the majority of the policy committee members pushed back on, on a number of those. And then last Wednesday, again, a Zoom meeting was the WRCOG, Western Community Energy Board Meeting, and we had a presentation by David Wright, who is a very knowledgeable, experienced, 30 years experience individual in the field of energy, and particularly on, on community choice aggregation. Went over a number of things, talking about some recommendations of refinements to some of the approach that WCE is taking. He made some recommendations that they increase their staffing, felt that the current staffing was, was not sufficient based on the scope of work that they have to do. And we had some discussions about WCE rate stabilization and adjustment policy. We'll, we'll be having another meeting in, in May, and I anticipate that they'll be coming forward with some, some rate adjustment recommendations. The, a lot of the issue stems from the fact that with the combination of the wildland fires and the combination of, of COVID impact, there's been a significant impact on all CCAs throughout, throughout the state, based on the fact that people are being given grace periods and not having to pay their utility bills, and the subsequent impact on, that it's having on that. The other, and I think I touched on this at our last meeting, is, is the resource allocation is, everybody's fighting for the same resources, and, and the rates have considerably gone up and that. So all of those have, they act as a force multiplier that are adversely affecting all CCAs throughout the state. So we're not the only ones dealing with that, and WCE is, is mapping out a strategy going forward. And, and I have signed up to participate in, in a learning exercise Thursday morning, learn a little bit more about Outlook.
Oh, nice.
Hopefully I'll get more conversant with that, so. I appreciate the IT department sending out the invitation to, to sign up for those. And I think that's it for now. Oh, and, uh, meanwhile, we had a wonderful presentation last Saturday at, at the Hemet Library, we got to witness the recognition of a number of Hemet police officers for either the newly hired or the recently promoted. It's, it was a combination of officers being recognized from 2019 that didn't get to have that ceremony because of the COVID restrictions last year. So it was nice to see them being finally recognized, and we had some, some really good stories about accomplishments that some of these officers did in, in heroic efforts, and, and what they went through to achieve those. So it was nice to be, be there and be a part of that. Councilmember Lilienthal and, and city manager were.
And I was on Zoom.
And you were on Zoom.
Yeah, I'm glad they had that.
And you were all in trash.
That was awesome, that was great.
We were all busy that day. There was a lot of things going on at the library Saturday, and with that, I'm done.
And did you have any updates from Councilmember Kuppa? Did she send you anything that she wanted to just double check?
No, she didn't.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Lilienthal?
It, it, I also want to say that it was a pleasure to, um, I've never been to a, like a ceremony where they, involving the police, and so to hear a lot of the stories like from their side was a, it's almost like a, a different perspective of, like, you know, being a police officer in any city, in any capacity. I do particularly want to bring up the fire on Alessandro. Some of the, I mean, there were, you had, you had the people who were answering the calls, and, you know, one lady was talking about how, you know, she, she, she was on the phone with some teenager, and she was like the last voice to hear, you know, before, you know, the thing happened. And, and then all of the, the police officers and, and everybody who showed up to that. I mean, right now, in today's climate, I, I think we have to give a lot of respect to first responders, because these people see a lot of things on a daily basis that, you know, I mean, we're right now in a city council meeting, and I can hear sirens, and we're sitting in here comfortably, you know, and, and people are out there serving and trying to protect the, the community, and try to show up on, you know, so that someone can survive. And I, I think we really need to like step outside of ourselves and really kind of put ourselves in, in these people's shoes, um, which I also had to learn, a chance to learn about a program they have where you get to, I guess it's with the citizens, where you can, um, you're taken through some kind of program where you get, I don't know, I shouldn't even be talking about it, because I don't even know the name of it.
Academy?
The Citizen Academy, but, um, I do, I want to go through that. I also want to do some ride along, so I hope that that comes back up. But yeah, it was a, it was a really, I hope that that gets open to the public, because then you get to see a whole different side of, you get to see the other side, you know? When I was working in manufacturing, I was part of the shipping department, and then they had us switch roles to like accounting, and so we got to see the other side, and you get, when you get to see the other side, you, you're, you're more open to, um, someone else's perspective of how things go about, and I think it really opens up. So I really had a good time at that. I appreciate the invite.
Okay, Mayor Proton Males?
Okay, uh, the skate park, I don't have any updates on that. We sent out a grant proposal for the skate park and haven't received anything yet, as far as I know. Planning Commission's been pretty busy. We got a new car wash that may be going up in Stetson, I think it's called the blah, 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 uh, the Sunny, 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 the Sunny Car Wash will be a hand car wash, with vacuums and all that good stuff. I think they're building one in Florida also, so this will be number two. Zone changes, 21 dash 001, West End Consisting, or End Zoning Consistency. A city initiated proposal to amend the existing zoning designations as shown on the city's official zoning map regarding four parcels totaling 55 acres or .18 acres to change the existing heavy agriculture A2 zone to general manufacturing M2 zone, getting ready for our cannabis, right? So that's, that was approved, and I believe Cindy Limkey made the motion to approve with Dana Hill's second unit, second unit. And then we have a, a really nice one from the Planning Commission. We have a conditional use permit for a Piara pizza drive-through restaurant that's going to be open 24 hours, seven days a week, and the application's requesting conditional use permit approval for the 3,000 point, 3.277 square foot drive-through, or 3,000. And it's, the restaurant's going to stay open for 24 hours with a drive-through, blah, 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 modified. Drive-through service will be from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and drive-through only service proposed between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM. So that, hopefully they make good pizza, will be pretty nice. The, blah, 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 the community action partnership is still moving pretty good. They had to put a halt on their, on their grants because they were overwhelmed, so that will start back up in May, May 3rd, but, you know, I, I post this stuff on my Facebook, and you can also go to www.calihap, or pappy.com, and they do no-cost weather, weatherization services, new windows, new rubber seals, anything that, that deals with, wow, your weather, weatherization services, so you need to utilize that. FEMA Public Assistance Program, oh, um, the League of California Cities put out something with FEMA Public Assistance Program for Project Room Key, and this is supposed to be a pretty good, um, um, program out there for the homeless, so I have some literature on that, if anyone's interested on it. I have a whole packet here for Project Room Key, maybe the city might want to look at something like that, because FEMA basically is providing 100% federal, federal cost share reimbursement funding for eligible projects that deal with room key activities. And then the Ramona Bowe Bowl was going to have a Cinco de Mayo thing that was going to be run by My City Youth, but I'm not sure if that got postponed till June 5th. It did get postponed until June 5th. So I guess Ramona Bowe's back in action, and we'll be having some activities there. And that's, that's about it for me.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I don't have much to report. This is National Volunteer Month, so I want to always say thank you to all the volunteers that work throughout our city. I know that there are so many people stepping up to accomplish things in so many different areas, so we're grateful. Okay, next we have ad hoc committees, uh, let's see, we'll go down here, I know the council protocols are waiting on that, Works Study, Banking RFP, we received our proposals, so we're reviewing those. Vision Admission Ad Hoc, that is on there, so that when we have our six-month review. Uh, Cleanup Graffiti, Lilienthal Males.
There's going to be a, a group, a Living, Living Way, I think it's called, and they're going to help me coordinate efforts to tackle the graffiti. So I'll be making Facebook posts about sending you your pictures and things like that, but also there'll be stipulations like taking pictures and emailing me so that I could give them to the Rocks team.
Now, um, again, Living Way Church and the Adopt a Block is happening every Saturday, so if you're interested, I think we're starting that new one with the other church, but we're still out there picking up trash.
Excellent, good. Okay, our homeless outreach, Ad Hoc Committee, we have a meeting with the Salvation Army on Thursday, actually, to go over some homeless solutions, so we look forward to that. We've had some different outings in the parks and trying to encourage people off the streets, and we just keep trying. All right, Business Outreach Ad Hoc. Males, Lilienthal, do you guys either one have a Business Outreach Ad Hoc report?
Oh, Business Outreach, yes, I'm, I'm working with Cindy Limkey at the Chamber on, I don't, I can't even remember what it is, but we're working on it. She's good, too, because she's coming up with a lot of good ideas, but we are working on.
Okay, well, excellent, thank you.
And then there's going to, I'm also going to work with her, too, to do a job fair with a company called Denso out in Temecula, so their staffing company will, is going to come out here, that's a preview.
Excellent. All right, um, and then Investment RPU, I reported on that, Banking RFP. Councilmember Lilienthal, it's you and Councilmember Kuppa skipped over you, so, do you have any, anything to report on your committee?
What am I, I don't know what I'm allowed to say or not say.
You can say whatever you want here.
Okay. So we were looking at two, we're looking at two, so our current one, right? And then the other one would be Wells Fargo, and it looks like we're going to bring it to council, because it looks, it looks pretty good, but I will tell you that one of them speaks about the community heavily, and so I'm looking forward to working with this. And it's also going to be cheaper for the city, but, so there's a lot of pluses, but the, the main thing is that they're going to, they're going to work well with the city as far as the community is concerned. And so one thing I'd like to highlight that they were talking about was that they offer their employees two days a year paid for volunteer, any kind of volunteer. their employees, um, two days a year, paid, for volunteer, any kind of volunteer, and so, um, I wanted to see if we could take full advantage of that. Okay.
Well, excellent. All right, City Manager Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I don't know about you, but Councilmember Lilienthal just left me in a bunch of suspense about what that recommendation is going to be, so I guess we got to wait for a future council meeting. Uh, I just have a couple items, Mayor. I really wanted to acknowledge the work that was, uh, completed by, uh, Councilmember Lilienthal, as well as, uh, Mayor Proton Males, in getting the cleanup, uh, event squared away. I mean, that really was an idea that was born out of, um, you, you all both acknowledging that, uh, that was needed in the community, so I really wanted to acknowledge the fact that, um, you know, it was really that idea that made that happen, so thank you to you both. And then, uh, I did have a chance to go to the PD Award Ceremony, great event, great to see the great work that our officers do day in and day out, and to have them be acknowledged. I know, we've got one, uh, individual here that was acknowledged, uh, at that event, so I want to thank, um, the folks that are here, uh, as well. And then finally, it's a very busy time, I know we've got a couple agenda items that we're going to knock out in the next couple of meetings, too, so we'll have some more at subsequent meetings that we're just meticulously, methodically going through and knocking them off, so, um, I think that concludes, oh, and then also, too, we did have a chance to, I know, uh, Councilmember Lilienthal after the PD event, um, and then also, I think, uh, Councilmember Brown also saw the good work that was going on at the community event, and then we had a chance to talk to Mayor Proton Males while he was out there in his vest and doing the good work, so I, I think you developed a little bit of, you know, muscles as a result of all the work that you were doing, so, good to see everybody there, but then also acknowledge the Public Works Team for everything that they did to make that happen with the Fallas event, so that concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. Item 22, future agenda items. I move that we delete item number one, since we've finished that.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Motion by Mayor Meyer, second by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilienthal?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Males?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes.
Uh, to eliminate the, uh, item number one off of the future agenda items.
Excellent. Um, thank you very much. With that, we will adjourn this meeting.